It's 6 o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order and note that Mark Peters and Carl's Law are excused, they're excellent.
Stand by your allegiance.
Carl's on the phone.
Oh, Carl's on the phone, okay. Doing noted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
All the guys, Carl. I wasn't sure you got hold of him yet.
Yeah, and I may have to relay, guys. I know he has a hard time hearing on my phone, so.
Is he hearing?
Yeah, so in front of the mayor, I might be able to hear better, but normally I'll keep him on mute, and if you, there's a vote, I'll take it off mute. Okay, thanks Carl.
That came over the speaker pretty good. Did you guys hear him okay?
I think it's more him being able to hear, so the microphones pick it up for him.
Good. We have the agenda review and approval and the questions regarding the agenda.
Do we need to add the other executive session?
We do. We can make it.
Do we need a motion for that or just add it as an A B?
A B.
And I did lay the motion down for guys, so.
Yeah, the motion can just be to change or amend as.
Amend the agenda.
Yeah, as presented.
I'd move to approve the agenda as amended and.
I'll second.
Sorry, second. Motion is second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Whatever, Carl.
I think she was for it.
Reminder.
I like the way you. Okay, thanks Carl.
Good test run there Carl. All right, public comments. Is there anybody here that wishes to make any comments on any subject that is not on our agenda tonight? Are you?
Go ahead, chief. He's going to talk about fire truck, I think.
This is just in regards to the fire truck. We just wanted to thank Administration Council, Thrive, and everybody involved with the purchase of this fire truck. It's a great asset for us, and it's going to be a great fire truck for us, I believe. We're pretty happy with it and everything that we got with it and for it, so we're very pleased and we can't wait to get it in service, so.
You know, I'd like to add to that our community, the citizens and businesses that continue to support a full-time fire department. It's very important.
Very much so.
So it's greatly appreciated.
Yes, thank you all for this, so.
Well, at this moment, we're going to take a recess and go outside and look at the new fire truck. Anyone here is welcome to come out and look at it. We'll just take a few minutes and do that.
Are you there, Carl?
I can call in sick.
I am here still. Okay, we're getting back in here.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you for the show and tell with the new fire truck. Moving on, consent agenda. Any questions, concerns?
Make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
Do we have a second? Motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I did.
Moving on to new business, Meadowbrook Park land swap.
Mayor and council, we had a request, actually Greg and I just happened on to this one day. We were looking and saw a shed being built or put in, and we did not realize the property lines were quite so off up in Meadowbrook Park on that south side. If you look at the maps, I've got map one in your packet, it's kind of hard to tell, but the red boundary on the map, on that map one, is our existing property today. So it's got some diamonds, jet outs, whatever you want to call it, in the park. I can tell you that's not how it's maintained. It's maintained as a straight property line down through there with our utilities, because that's where our utilities run north to south. You can see in this picture that the shed is clearly on our prop, on the city's property on the park. What I asked the landowner to do was go out and have it surveyed, and if he could get us the legal descriptions, I would bring it to you guys to try and do a land swap and get that line straightened out. A little sliver of it will go to the green walls to the south, that dark blue or black area, and then the rest of it will go to, I can't think of the gentleman's name now.
On north of track two, track one?
Yes.
So you're getting rid of the diamond and going straight there too?
Right. The second, map two shows you kind of the, what goes to who. Track one will come to the city, he'll quit claim deed that to us, and then we'll quit claim deed two, or track two to the north property, and then track three will go to the south piece. And that will basically run the property line straight through and clean that. Honestly, I don't know how, it was plotted originally, and I don't think the church was there when it was originally plotted, there was a road that went up through there. And you can kind of see in this map, it's not very clear, there's a dotted blue line that has another parcel in there that obviously was never used and the road was vacated. So I guess your thoughts, questions on the transfers?
The only thing I might suggest, Corey, so we have full transparency, if we get something like this again, I'd like to see maybe a letter from the landowners that they don't oppose of it.
And the one landowner actually paid for the survey. The city did not pay for the survey.
Sure.
So, and the green walls were, are very well aware of what's going on as well, so. But yeah, we can certainly do that. And just seeking a motion to approve the land transactions, and I'll have the city attorney draw up the quit claim deeds, and we'll get them filed in the next few weeks here.
Counsel, any questions? If not, can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the land transactions as proposed on the attached maps and authorize staff to sign the necessary documents.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Promise to Pay Humanity House, who will be presenting? Make sure you get the microphone down where you can be heard, state your name, speak loud. This is me in film, so the viewers need to make sure they can be heard.
All right.
You can be heard, sorry.
Hi, I am Tori from Humanity House, and I have a speech that I prepared for you guys today. The city of Iowa has an unusually strict utility policy that is difficult for its citizens to abide by. The current policy does not allow any flexibility in dealing with customers who for whatever reason cannot pay their bill in full or on time. The policy also affects the economic well-being of our community by forcing some customers to abandon their bills and relocate entirely. The goal is to reduce local economic hardship and prevent utility shut-offs as much as possible. The current policy does not improve the rate at which the city is paid for utilities and causes our most vulnerable citizens unnecessary stress, limits them economically, and impacts their mental and physical health. The overall poverty level in Kansas is 11.7%. Iowa's poverty rate is 26.7%. 20% of Iowa's population is 65 and older, and 63% of schoolchildren in Iowa qualify for free or reduced lunches. These numbers are shameful, given how small our community is. Our community is struggling, and the city's current policy helps no one. The current policy is outdated, out of touch, and targets citizens that are already struggling. If no changes are made to the policy in Iowa, we will continue to see needless hardship inflicted upon our most vulnerable citizens, a loss of economic activity, and a loss of population as citizens move to different communities in response to the economic pressure they face here. Substantial strain will continue to be placed on local charities and nonprofits that assist these households, and perhaps most important, the individuals who are struggling will be denied the basic human dignity of being able to fulfill their responsibilities. Humanity House is proposing two promise to pay policies. One is short-term with payment to be made within two weeks, the other is long-term with payment to be made within a year. I have researched the use of these two policies in other Kansas communities. Paola, Harrington, and Augusta all have short-term promise to pay arrangements. Communities with payment plan arrangements include Laharp, Egerton, and Columbus. A list of those calls and results has been distributed. Megan Lawrence of Harrington says, "The main benefit to offering payment plans is that it reduces the number of utilities that we have to shut off for non-payment. It allows us to offer our customers a little bit of flexibility if times get tough." Another example is the city of Alma. Their city clerk, Sherry Smith, says that one of the benefits to having a payment plan option for customers is that it allows citizens to take the burden of paying a big bill off at one time and gives peace of mind. On average, Humanity House pays 18 utility bills a month for an average amount of $3,356. Perhaps the most heartbreaking example we at Humanity House have dealt with regarding the current policy was a couple who live on social security. Their check was to be deposited at 3:30 on the afternoon they came to us for assistance. With no promise to pay policy in effect, city employees, following current practice, disconnected utility services at 9:30 that morning, even though the couple had informed the office that the money would be available that afternoon. We often help working people who will be paid on a Friday and will be able to pay their bill that day or the following Monday, but are disconnected on a Tuesday. These situations would be alleviated by adoption of part one of our proposal. We do not gain anything as a community by making it harder for people to pay their bills. Neither the people who must pay the bills nor the entities that hope to get paid will benefit from unnecessary hardship designed with no functional purpose in mind. It is crucial for the health and longevity of this town to design policies that will allow members of the community to be productive, prosperous, and responsible for themselves. There are a few people in attendance here tonight in support of this effort. Would it be possible to allow them to speak at this time?
A minute to two to three minutes. I'd appreciate that.
Hello, my name's Logan. Can you hear me? Okay, closer. Hi, my name's Logan Stensing. I live at East Gate Lofts. I'm here in like a personal capacity, but I do work at Thrive Allen County. I'm a policy coordinator there, where I work on early childhood education and policy, which is again another issue in our community across Kansas. So it was a few months back, and if you're familiar with Thrive, downstairs we have our care navigators where, you know, they can apply for healthcare, other various programs, social services. And at lunchtime, they're often on break. I was working through lunch, and we got a phone call. And this grandmother was calling because they had just had their utilities cut off, and she was asking for help. I had never navigated that, I'd never taken a call like that before, and so I'm start trying to figure it out. I'm calling our care navigators that are at lunch, I'm like, all right, where are the resources? Humanity House, the ministerial alliance. Both of them were out of money. They were out. So I had to call her back, and I'm on the phone, you know, I'm telling her, sorry, whatever, and then she starts apologizing to me. She starts saying, I'm sorry for, you know, bothering you, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to help our grandbabies that are, you know, I'm concerned, it was in the cold months, and I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional, but it was just really hard to hear that, that I should have been the one that was sorry. I was the one that was unable to help in that moment. But her shame, she was, you know, it was her fault. She was just trying to think about her kids. And so, you know, I think about this utility shut-off policy, and I think about our budgets and our policy represent our values, right, as a community. And I think, you know, you can look at that list that has been shared out of all these various communities that have figured this out, right? They've created a solution to a problem, they've figured out there is nuance to this issue, we don't have to just shut people off. We can think, you know, as humans and as people, enact kind of, you know, and build incapacity for compassion in our laws and in statute. And I also would urge you, if you're leaning no on this, if you think that we should keep the utility policy as is, I urge you to take, you know, go to the city clerk's office or go to Humanity House and to be the person taking those calls, right? Because again, in effect, you're creating the law that those folks on the ground are enacting, and those are the people that have to hear those calls. So not only do I think this is beneficial for residents, but I would talk to city staff, like how demoralizing does it have to be to be the, on the city end, to be objective and to pass these laws and to enforce it, when you can see there's neighboring communities that have found a path, that have found a way to lead with our values and to pass policy that, you know, centers people first. And honestly, as a resident, I would be willing to pay more in utilities if I knew that it was helping other residents. But in that time where, you know, this grandmother needed help, I barely had money to pay my bills, so I didn't feel like it's kind of one of those collective action problems that we are facing as a community. And that's, I think, displayed by the fact that so many of our philanthropic efforts aren't even able to match the need that's there. So that's, you know, why I'm here, I just wanted to stand kind of in support of that and just encourage you to really work towards ending this policy and passing something that liked the promise to pay policy. So, thank you.
You.
Hi, I'm Georgia Masterson, and I work at Humanity House, and I just want to pray that you all make a decision that is in favor of our neediest citizens.
I think that's everybody that wanted to speak.
Counsel, any comments?
Mr. Mayor, so when the issue first came before the council a few years ago, I think we passed a lot of meaningful things. We do have, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't remember what passed and what didn't, but we did pass a once-a-year extension, so if they have a past due balance, there's no penalty for the first year. We reduced our late fee payments to the lowest pretty much of any community around us, and we have one of the longest periods of time that you have to pay the bill, correct?
Correct.
So I absolutely empathize with what we're doing as far as trying to find a solution, but I don't see the solution as extending the payment. And that's speaking as somebody who has had to utilize some of the services that are available in the community. I think that the problem you run into is if your bill is, like mine was last January, if your bill is $500, and you're staring down the barrel of, you know, I got to pay $500 on top of everything else that's owed, taking that $500 and going, okay, we're going to break that up into, say we're going to break that up into three payments, okay, that's great. I can afford to pay this month, but instead of next month being 250, next month's 400. And it's like, okay, well, that just doesn't work. And I think that there needs to be a solution to this problem, but I think the solution needs to come from private enterprise. Humanity House does a fantastic job helping our, helping citizens of all walks, whether it's budgeting, or grandmother's kitchen, or anything. You guys do a fantastic job, and we really appreciate you guys as an organization.
Thank you.
I just think that in terms of addressing this issue, we need to find a solution that both takes into consideration somebody's humanity and doesn't unnecessarily burden people with the idea of, you know, sure, we helped you out this month, but what about next month, what about the month after? And I've been mulling it around in my head for a long time, and one of the things that I've thought of is, and I don't, I don't begin to understand how Humanity House operates, but in a lot of communities, what you see this issue tackled with, because this is really important to me, that we don't leave people out in the dust, because there are individuals who, you know, they need air conditioning, or they need the heater, or more importantly, you have kids who may have to go an entire week without clean clothes or things like that. For me, this issue becomes a question of when Humanity House gives money away for utilities, do those, are those individuals required to pay that back? And if they are, maybe we could get something between the ministerial alliance and Humanity House and the organizations that are trying to tackle this, where it is a case of, listen, this isn't, you know, this isn't free money, this isn't, you know, we're going to pay your utility bills and you walk away, it's, here is, here's the money to pay your utility bill, we will pay the city, but you need to pay us back, whether that's, whether that's right as a check, or volunteer work, or something like that. But I definitely think that this is something that needs to be tackled. I just don't think that the idea of a promise to pay is the way to do it. I mean, if you did a minimum balance, you know, listen, if somebody has, say, say you've got 75 bucks, 75 bucks and less, we don't shut you off. That's, you're carrying a balance of 75 bucks. Now, that's huge, when you're thinking there's probably 5,000 people in the city of Iowa, but, I mean, it's a lot easier to go, hey, your bill was $500, you need to come up with, however, whatever number that ends up being, you need to come up with 300 of that, and we'll carry a balance of 100, and you can pay the 100 next month. And I think that that's better than looking at somebody going, hey, you know, you got this huge utility bill, and we're going to break that up into five-month chunks, or six-month chunks, or year-long chunks. I mean, it doesn't really matter, because the following month you have the exact same issue. And that leads into a topic that's not even related to this, and that's the standard of, I mean, that's the standard of apartments that we allow to exist in the city, and that's a whole different discussion, but I think that, I think that looking for a silver bullet to what is obviously a massively complex issue, like a promise to pay, all it does is it just, it kind of kicks the can down the road for people. I mean, in a lot of these cases, it's not, it's not one person going, oh my God, I need help once, it's somebody who is consistently, for whatever reason, whether that's unemployment, whether that's economic hardship, whether that's, they're in the, they're in the one place that's available for rent in town, and they're walking from the south side of town up to Russell Stover's to work, and the place doesn't have proper insulation, and it doesn't have anything that it needs. I think that this is too much of an issue to go, here's the silver bullet, this is what we need to do. And I commend you guys for absolutely taking an effort on that. I just, as somebody who, excuse me, I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
You're fine.
As somebody who, absolutely, this is the kind of thing that keeps me up at night. This is why I'm in city government. This is the sort of thing, as well as the, as well as our heating locations, you know, finding businesses that the committee can get together and do that, like those are the things, that's why I want to do this. I just, rather than do something like a promise to pay and just set people up for continual failure, or worse, get them in a debt where it's like, listen, now we're coming after you. And obviously, we're not going to do that because we're a tyrannical government or like that, but it would be the nature of the beast, I mean, just in any situation. And so I really think that we need to find something that gets all of the voices in one place, gets everybody together, and legitimately looks at this issue and goes, okay, it's a problem, we all acknowledge that, it's just we need to figure out how we can best utilize city function, private entities, and address the whole thing, not just utilities. Because like you said, the poverty rate now in county is huge, the poverty rate in Iowa is massive. And it's not just, it's not just utilities, it's basic living, it's the cost of food, it's the cost of all this stuff. And I think what we need is, I think we need to have a discussion that's broader than just a repayment plan. I mean, I think it needs to be a, I think it needs to be a wide-scape discussion on, you know, how do we address these problems in a way that is more than just a partial solution? So I appreciate where you guys are coming from, I just, I can't get behind the idea of just kind of moving it down the road without something that's more concrete to actually address the issue.
May I make a comment?
We do have a policy that if we lend money to people, they make an effort to repay us. If there is no effort made and they come in in the future, we cannot help them. If they have made an effort and we have the funds, then we will, we will continue to help. My other comment is that there are actually two policies that we ask you to look at, and most of what you addressed, actually all of what you addressed, is the long-term promise to pay policy. The short-term promise to pay policy has to be paid off within two weeks, and that the difficulties that you described would not apply to those short-term policy things.
I don't, sorry, do you have any further? Or Nick, do you have any further questions?
No.
I have a few comments and questions. So a couple of them to address your comments. Just because it's not a silver bullet doesn't mean that it won't help, and that doesn't mean that it's not worthwhile. So just because it doesn't fix every problem, doesn't mean that it's not worthwhile or worth doing. I appreciate like all the work that you guys do very much. And, you know, I take heart when you who spend a lot of your time dealing with this and thinking of ways, you're experts in the local field of trying to get people's Iowa utility bills paid, and this is what you've come up with. And so I think that if this is the idea that you guys have said, yes, we think this will really help, I think that that's worth listening to as, you know, as a way to help solve these problems. I do appreciate how your asks don't really cost us anything, other than delaying payment, so there is a mild cash flow issue, as well as more work for our utility department. So that is nice, like this is, nobody's giving up anything, it's not pushing these costs onto others. In fact, some of these, like the long-term pay, kind of have the potential to, you know, get more in collections, you know? An example of, say, you know, I think we, if someone has a utility shut-off, has a utility bill, and they move out of town, if they want to move back, they have to pay that off in full before they can start utilities again. So this would allow, like the long-term, would allow them to do things like set up a payment plan to pay off that past one, and then set up new utilities. And so that, that would probably result in either someone just not coming back to town, and we wouldn't collect that at all. So there's some potential there for that to have some benefits. I can see the, our utility bills are kind of like healthcare costs, where you go into the hospital and you really have no idea what they're going to charge you until you're done. And our utility bills are kind of like that too, like the rates change. I mean, I don't really sit around the AM radio and listening to utility futures every day, but, you know, you won't know what it's going to be until you get the bill. And so through no fault of their own, just because of the market forces, people will sometimes have, you know, very light bills in the summer and very heavy bills in the winter, and you won't really know that until well after the fact, when it's far too late to do anything about it. And so for people, especially the elderly, who are on a fixed income, being able to flex that a little bit, I think is important, you know, for other reasons. And so we're not giving them anything, we're just pushing it down a little bit so that they can do those things. I do appreciate the council's past actions. I mean, like you said, the council has, some of the, I guess the council lowered some of the other stuff. Those are all good things, and that doesn't mean that we should stop there, or need to stop there. If there's more that we can do that, you know, this doesn't cost us anything, we should definitely, I think, consider it. Okay, so now my questions. Our current policy allows something very much like this. In the policy, it states, "Any consumer receiving such a notice, a delinquency notice, shall have the right to appear and be heard considering such bills are the deadline for payment of the bills. The hearing shall be before the governing body," which I assume is the city council, "or its designated representative prior to the time designated as the deadline for payment of such bills." So I've been coming to city council meetings for about two years, I've never seen anyone come before the council. Has the council designated a person to do that for the council? Does anyone know? Okay, so you're the designated, so people go before you? So it sounds like you have the authority already to extend these?
Yes.
Okay. So do we already kind of have that in process? So it's not really changing anything, the short-term promise to pay, right? So do you have the authority to just, to delay it for one or two weeks? Or do we need to extend you that authority to make that happen?
Georgia, take them in order.
Yes, I have. I'm very cautious about people's financial information. I don't feel that's my authority to see that things. Two to three weeks we don't extend, because by the time we shut you off, you're almost three full months into owing the utilities. So kind of like Nick said, if we, if we give you too long to pay, you're just, you're just piling it, which we've seen many times when individuals receive leap or during the COVID times, the longer they were given, the more money they just piled on that they owed. However, if they can show me that they do have a hardship, I also have a lot of information at my fingertips that maybe everyone doesn't have. For example, you know, how many times has this individual been helped? Has this individual been helped continuously for six months and not paid anything on their bill? So it's not. So, it's not, everyone that comes in is not granted that, and, and truthfully, according to the policy, they're supposed to come in ahead of time, not two minutes after we shut you off, or three hours after we shut you off, or, and, and calling, truthfully, a lot of times abusing the person on the phone, it's also hard to extend kindness when they're, they're not really asking, they're just getting pretty vocal with us. But, we try to take into consideration individuals that have had hardships, and we have. We've had several, we've had a few people that signed payment arrangements with us. I will tell you, the majority have not followed through. So, then we had to say, sorry, now you owe us this much money, because you signed this agreement and you said you would do this, and you didn't follow through, and I always tell them, keep in communication with me. If you, you know, if you have something come up, keep in communicate, and, and that's not been the case. Now, I'm not saying everybody's going to do that. Yes, there's been a few, but the majority that we have allowed payment arrangements have not followed through.
So, some have, but the majority have not?
Correct. And we do allow 42, a minimum of 42 days. You can pay any part of that bill during that 42 days at any time. And the reason the council decided a long time ago to give 42 days, everyone gets a paycheck within 42 days, whether you get paid monthly, bi-weekly, weekly, whatever. So, they, they knew that, the council knew that everyone would get a paycheck during that time. So, it, it gives you a broad time to pay. Also, I don't know if, I mean, in Matt or Cory's write-up, you know, we're looking at 2% of our customers, so it's not a broad base, and that's just what we shut off, those aren't the ones that are asking for assistance, so. It's a very few customers, is all I'm, I'm just pointing that out.
The average monthly payment plan, is there a, a real benefit? I mean, you would know more accurately your monthly bill.
And, well, Mayor, I'll speak to that, and I'll take my, my job hat off and my regular citizen hat on, I'm on that.
Me, too.
Up, up there.
And, and I pay anywhere between a, a $4 window every month, no, no matter what my actual bill is. And it's, uh, boy, you know, during the summer, it, it peaks up to the, the high end of the $4 window, and then on the winter months, when it's a little less, it's, it's on the lower end of that $4 window. But it, in the time I've been doing it, and I've been on it for a year now, I've paid every one of my bills automatic withdrawal on my due date within that $4 window. And it, it's something that, that when I talk to people about our utilities, I tell them about that, and it's amazing how many people don't know about that. We tell everyone about it, and we encourage people to do it. You're right there in a $4 window. Right, right, you have to pay it for 12, 12 consecutive months, you have to be on-time in full, which I was and am, and always have been. And, and then I went on the minimum payment plan, and it's, it's in, it's in a $4 window every month. It's, it's pretty easy to budget, I budget on the high end of that $4 window, and if I'm on the low end, I'm not that far off. So, we, we encourage people to, to do that payment plan. It, it's something that maybe we can do a better job of letting people know. But, yeah, that's.
People are also able to do that if they don't qualify, for example, if they haven't lived in that, at that utility for the minimum of 12 months, or have had a late payment. They can still pay ahead, they've got a couple of extra bucks this month, they can pay ahead, and the credit balance stays on the bill, it doesn't go anywhere else but to them.
Now, let me ask another question in that regard, because somebody made the accusation once that if you lived in an apartment, you couldn't get on the level plan, is that true? However, what happens if you househop, but you're still a customer in good standing, you go from?
Have to be at a residence for 12 months.
At that one residence, because that's where the utilities are accumulated.
And my staff is really good about encouraging people, if they, if they're interested in the AMP plan and they don't qualify, maybe they haven't lived there, they're really helpful about saying, hey, here's your 12-month average, we can look, you know, what your average would be, so you can pay that. If you start getting in that habit, then when you get to 12 months, you'll feel, you know, you'll feel regular about it, and it'll feel normal. So, whether you technically are on it or not, you're welcome to do that. Like, like Joelle said, you can pay more or less.
Yeah, and it makes it easier for you to set your budgets.
I want to get back in order here, Nick, you were, you had the floor. Do you have any further questions?
I, I do not, at this time.
Okay. I'll reach out to Paige, because she had a question.
I'll defer to Georgia.
Okay. Georgia, give you a few more minutes?
Any.
You need to come up so the public can hear you.
I'm thinking that the reason that the policy needs to be changed, I'm thinking of the elderly couple who were shut off at 9:30 when they got their check at 3:30, and the city was aware that they would get their check at 3:30. I don't know if Roxanne was not available to be the agent for this city council, and I'm assuming that that probably was the case, but then her staff does not have the ability, did not have the ability to keep those people from being shut off. If the policy were changed, then the staff would have that ability.
I have a question regarding that, though. How far in advance did that couple go to the city office asking for the, the leniency, knowing that their check was going, I mean, did they go there at 9 o'clock in the morning the day of shut-off? They knew when their check was hitting the bank, they could have gone even 24 hours prior to shut-off and discussed it with Roxanne or someone on the staff.
I, I think that most of the population of Iowa does not know how severe Iowa's utility policy is, and they did not realize that they needed to go ahead.
So, my question, my question to you and to Humanity House is, what are, what's being done to educate your clients on how, how to do these things? I mean, we, our goal is to educate everyone how to get out of poverty, how to budget and manage, and, I mean, I think you guys do a phenomenal job with everything that you do, and I believe that the city works really hard at trying to do the best that they can with, with what they have. But, one of my major concerns is what is being done to educate these clients on how to get themselves out of this, to break the chain, to get out of the, we need to teach them to go to the city when they get the yellow postcard, and try to have a civil conversation with the employees. You know, our employees are just upholding a policy that they have been asked to do, and.
That's why we're asking you to change the policy.
I understand that, but we get more flies with honey than we do with vinegar. And, I don't like hearing how our employees are treated. They are trying to uphold a policy, something that happened before now. Unfortunately, I was not part of this two years ago, when, two and a half years ago, when the city made the changes with the late fee and the lower penalty. And I agree that some things can be done, but even Newton, year number six, customers can request a one-week extension before their shut-off date. That's a sticking point for me. We have to be able to educate them to come into the office and have a conversation with our employees on how they can help us, because I do know that Roxanne does.
Provision could be part of the policy that they.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I said, that provision could be part of the policy that they need to come in prior to the shut-off date.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, I got you out of line.
And we will try, as we always do, to educate.
Okay, moving on. Nick, you said you were fin-
Sorry, Ree, for jumping in front. 42 days is a large amount of time. Of the two policies that were presented to us, the one that I do lean towards is a short-term promise-to-pay at most, just to start off, because I'd rather start with a small amount and build up, if it's possible. And also, I agree that there needs to be a caveat in, in the, in the provision, if it, if it is passed, that it needs to be self-started. People need to come forward, because we can't, we can't read minds. They can't be coming in after everything's happened. And, I, I still go back to the 42 days is, is a lot of time. This is, this is a difficult discussion, and it's, difficult discussions like this need to happen. Councilmember Kinder brought up something that I think we should discuss at a later time, that I wholeheartedly agree with, in, in his discussion. But, yeah, I, and speaking to, sorry, I'm rambling, speaking to the education part, yes, nonprofits can do the education, yes, the city can do the education, but we also, as just citizens ourselves, can try to assist each other in, in understanding what, what is and isn't the rules. Instead of just, you know, you hear somebody that's having issues with their, with their payments, tell them to go to Humanity House, no, you, you could possibly offer to help them out, in the sense of finding out what policies are, and I think there's a whole lot of onus that comes to the individual, and not necessarily organizations or the, or the city as a whole.
Do you have a question?
Comment?
Hi, my name is Joelle, and I'm on the.
Cory, I'd like to make a comment.
Tell him, hold up.
Hold on just a second, Carl, there's somebody at the mic, I'll, I'll get to you in just a second, okay?
Thank you.
I'm a board member at Humanity House also, and so, I just, what I wanted to state was, the reason that we want to push for a policy to be in place, more than anything, is so that it's not on Roxanne to make those choices, it's not on a person to be able to find the courage or whatever, to go to somebody and ask for help, necessarily. They know, and, you know, promote the policy and tell them what it is, and say, this is available for everyone, and it doesn't have to be a point of, like, I'm in a hardship right now, or I'm in a, you know, like, a rough situation, and I'm embarrassed to go and talk about it. Like, it's just available to everyone, that you could have that, the short-term policy especially, that it's just a thing that exists, and it's not subjective, it's not objective, it just, this is a thing that you can go and do to take care of your problem, and it's set, and there's no questions about it, so that it's, it's the rules, and then we can educate the people on, this is the timeframe that you have to go and take care of the problem, or to go and get it arranged. So, it's, it's more of making it, that's the rules, and so, it's easier to follow, and it's easier to go and ask for that, or to, to participate in that, as opposed to having to go and say, here's my messy business. You can just say, like, hey, this is a thing that's available and I need to do it. Thank you.
Cory, you want to ask, Carl?
Hey, Carl, you want to go ahead?
Okay, I just wanted to bring up a couple of points here and emphasize some of the other ones that have already been made. I think our city has a very liberal policy, especially when you compare our policy with Kansas Corporation Commission, which deals with the vast majority of customers in Kansas. Ours is more liberal and allows more time to pay. The quandary we're in is that the more time we allow people to pay, it seems like they're only digging a bigger hole for themselves, and it's harder to get out of the hole we're in. I wanted to also give my shout-out to Roxanne and her staff, I think they do an excellent job of explaining our policies and giving people all the benefits they can, but at the end of the day, I think our policies are clear, we give people adequate time to make payments, and by the time this cutoff comes, if they don't make that payment, then they already have a second bill due for the next month. So, it's, it's to their advantage to do it earlier and not later. So, I think our efforts in the community of teaching principles of self-reliance, encouraging people to take care of these problems earlier, is to their advantage and to our advantage. And I don't want to, you know, I'm kind of sad when I hear people blame these things onto our utility office, because they do an excellent job of trying to enforce our policies, and I think they're good policies, and if there was any change, I would make them more restrictive and follow the Kansas Corporation rules. So, I think that's all I've got to say.
Thanks, Carl.
Yeah, this is a really difficult situation, a tough subject. I'm going to say that I agree with most of the comments that have been made here. I think that we have a policy that is in writing. It's pretty clear to me, and I can't see extending credit to anybody for as long as they, you know, need it. I mean, that's essentially what we're looking at, or for a year, or whatever. I think what the real problem comes down to, in my mind, is we've got a pretty decent policy, but you're up against situations where people have power shut-off in the winter, or in, or in August, when it's 100 degrees. So, what I would entertain is some sort of addendum to the policy that addressed those situations. And I don't know how to do that right this second, but.
We have, we have.
Oh, okay, what's that?
You can't shut off if it's under.
We check two different weather temperatures, two different weather companies, every hour temperature, if one of those hours falls below freezing, we do not shut it off.
Okay, and do we have something at the other end?
Famous for hot. We, we look at it and monitor, you know, we don't have a set degree, but if we feel like it's going to be a problem, then we won't. We just kind of talk it out in the office, you know, what kind of temperature we're looking at. Yes, we do.
Okay, well, then, you know, I, honestly, I think we've got a pretty decent policy, so.
Well, weather policy was changed when we did the, the rest of the changes, Joel, not too many years ago.
So, okay.
With lowering the rate, or lowering the hookup connection charge and that type of thing.
Okay.
We always followed it, we just didn't have it right.
Right. It, it's very similar to what the other energy.
Is it fully KCC?
It's pretty close.
Yeah, the, the, the KCC is if it gets below freezing, they, they don't shut you off. Now, now, that doesn't absolve you of, of having to pay any consumption, it doesn't absolve you of, of any kind of reduction in paying a, a penalty or a late fee, it just means that legally, you can be shut off, and it sounds like we follow that policy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And it could be a day, it could be a week that you delay that.
Yeah, and, and that policy, that's a state statute that, that private companies have to follow, but cities don't, and Iowa chooses to follow.
Paige?
I want to thank you all for your time and listening to this, and our proposals, I think that everyone's made definitely some points, but I want to bring up that we are always looking for volunteers, so I know Nick and Joelle and Nick Lowman, you've all have stated that you, you're not sure exactly what the policies are at Humanity House, and we would love to have you volunteer and come and work with people and, and see what it's, what these phone calls are like, like Logan was saying, and help in the food pantry. I, I worked at Humanity House as an advocate, and it really changed my worldview on how, or at least my city view, on how people are really struggling. I know that my family struggles, we don't live in Iowa, but the, my struggles are nothing compared to the people that come in and ask for help. I had a woman one time come in and say, I just need a little bit of food, I get $12 in SNAP benefits, and I, that lasts me the whole month, I just buy a thing of turkey and some crackers, and I just. I just sliver it and I eat that. So, don't give me too much, I don't want to take too much, I don't want to take more than I need. And I was like, I will give you everything in this pantry to know that you're going to be okay and that you're eating. She was so small and so frail. And, so I just, I just encourage you all, that when we are talking about our community, that you actually speak with our community members that are struggling, and you see how selfless that they all are, and how much they don't want to take up a lot of space when they should certainly take up a little bit more space. So, I highly encourage you all to come and volunteer, because we need it, honestly. It's just us. So, please come in and visit us anytime, we would really appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Very quick question. So, I wanted to be clear as well about, you know, understanding and appreciating all that you do at the City Clerk's Office, everyone in this, you know, City Hall. I'm just someone that, I've, you know, majored in public administration, I originally wanted to be a city manager, so I just have a deep appreciation for public servants and you being a part of that system, and understand that it can be really hard to navigate these situations and to be that, the frontline people handling those calls. And I guess my question was related to the payment plan you already mentioned, that there's some kind of iteration that exists, and I guess I was curious if there could be data made available on that, like, just to get an understanding of how many folks have used that. You said the majority had failed to follow through, so I guess I just was curious about that, as well as if there was any information on like, how many folks were cut off after that 42-hour period. I guess that was just more data to kind of understand the landscape of what our shut-off policy looks like, and kind of where the policy gives in and is, you know, told to be flexible.
Well, the...
I'm not sure what that is.
The policy is... Am I wrong? The policy is printed on every single yellow delinquent notice that goes to every single customer who receives one of those. Every single month, that same policy is on that card.
Yeah.
Every single month. So, individuals who come in, I... So, only a couple or whatever, how many ever of those are seeking help?
Yeah, we don't have any kind of organized system that ticks off how many people do this in a month and how many haven't done it. I'm going to back up what Roxanne said, and perhaps I'm jaded because I've been doing this for a while, but in the two cities that I worked at before this one, Seneca, the main one with utilities, a vast majority of the time, when people would set up a payment plan, it would... It's Carl, off.
He's on, he's back on, I didn't notice it went off.
Okay. But, most people did not fulfill their promise. And it, so when she says a majority to a vast majority didn't fulfill the plan, that's a correct statement in every place I've been. Like, I can only speak for those three, but her statement that most of those don't get, end up getting paid, is true. Not all of them, but in my experience, a majority don't fulfill the payment side of the plan. They do it long enough to get their utilities to stay on. And then when we shut them off, they come back in and ask for it again. In Seneca, it was lenient, we didn't have anything written, but we would let balances build up. And it was something that I tried to get stopped, so what I did is I just unilaterally decide, if you were three months behind, we were going to shut you off, and then you had to pay at least half of that. That was an unofficial policy, but it did get people finally paying. But unfortunately, some people took advantage of some goodwill.
Cam?
I mean, I think, I think our policy is good. Somebody, I mean, everyone has some kind of revenue coming in, I would assume during these 42... And if we only have a 2.2% shut-off rate, I think that's good. And I trust Rox...
Would it be, make your life easier if you just had, didn't have to sort through all this and make these judgments, and just said, okay, we have a policy, this is two weeks extension, that's up to two weeks, that's it? And it's, you don't have to do that?
It's more work for my staff, because we'd be tracking everybody who didn't pay and that we... Trust me, when we went through COVID, and people were allowed extensions, then it caused more problems. And we were, we were making, it was so much work. Just giving everyone the free will to make payments?
And you know, I think Humanity House knows that as well, because they admit they have a policy that if you don't try, if you don't make some payments, we're not going to help you anymore. Georgia, you and I go way back, serving on Hope Unlimited, almost 40 years ago. I spent years helping build up Pregnancy Resource Center where it is now. I was their chief executive officer for years and years and years. And there's a lot of people in this community that will simply get in that rut and take advantage month after month after month. And I think that's the scary part. How do you address that? How do you identify that so that, you know, we have to have an income coming in that still pays our bill? We're not getting a break. How do we pass that on to the other citizens that may not be willing to have added fees tacked on to their bill to pay our bill? So back to Hope Unlimited and PRC, it's really nice when they can get a capital campaign going, such as Hope Unlimited's doing now, reaching out to the private sector, because that really does seem to be the best deal a group can do. Because when you start coming to government, whether it's city or federal, you may get an idea of program that, hey, this policy's going to work, but because we're city government, there's going to be these sticking points over here, that it really doesn't work that good. You know, PRC takes zero state dollars, federal dollars, because there are certain things you can't talk about then. You're restricted. So that's the problem with getting government involved. I don't know what the answer is, but Joel?
Well, I know I kind of jumped in front of the line, but I do have a couple of other things to say. I feel that, first of all, if we were to change policy like we did with the lowering of the late fee and reconnect fee forgiveness, we do for one, we do for all. And, that's not a bad thing, but sometimes it can be. I know for a fact that Roxanne and her staff are compassionate towards the citizens of Iola. They have either personally helped financially, or they have other people that they know that they can get to help. I commend Humanity House and their efforts, and I see it being an organization for years to come. But I, you know, I too was there. 27 years ago, I got my first utility bill in my house, and it was well over $400, and that was 27 years ago. And I did call the city, wanting to know what I could do, but I called the city when I got the bill. And I was told I had 42 days to make, figure it out. I figured it out. I just, I don't want to perpetuate a bad situation. The two-week, short-term promise to pay, we essentially are doing that now. That's the yellow postcard that we send out to those that are delinquent. I've received that yellow postcard many times, actually, because of the way my budget was. I'm not proud of it, but it's the way it, you know, you just do it. So, I commend everyone's efforts, and I hope that we can figure something out. But I do, I would love to see, I know Paige, you said for me to volunteer, you know, it's on my bucket list of something to do. If I could do something else, my husband probably would kill me, because my plate is pretty full. I would love to see some kind of an education program that Humanity House would do to help these people try to work their way out of poverty. I know, Georgia, you've done, I believe it was called the Circles Program or something years ago, and, you know, I know it's hard, it's hard to lead a horse to water and make them drink. But, you know, I just, I believe that we have a good policy. I believe that our policy is actually a little more lenient than a lot of cities around us. You know, several of us council members have made phone calls. I just, I don't know, it is a very tough, tough subject, very tough subject. And again, I commend you, but I also commend our city staff, because they take a lot of heat. And sometimes, most of the times, very unnecessary. And so, anyhow.
I have a weird question, and it's thinking to my own budgeting. We have a really long time between when the meter's read and when the bill is due. So, we have a long time between the time the meter's read and when the bill is due. Not that we would necessar... As weird as it sounds, if we were to move the due date closer and extend the time between the due date and the shut-off date, you would get the notice sooner that your bill was overdue. And so I guess my question is, is sometimes I have a habit of things getting out of my mind, you know? It's not what I'm doing right now, and so it's not particularly pertinent to what I'm planning. And so, I mean, like I said, larger discussion needs to be had, but if we were to move it in and we were to send, you know, a reminder bill halfway through that said, hey, listen, you've got this, you've got this due, and, you know, here are your resources for, if you need assistance, I mean...
Okay, well, we have, first of all, to me, that's still, it's still going to be 42 days, if I'm following you right. So 42 days is 42 days. Second of all, I don't know how well the utility office is going to like having to send out a second bill.
Well, are you penalizing the people?
I was going to say, you do get two, you get the actual bill, and then you get the shut-off notice, which gives you your 12-day tick, your 12-day, 12-days countdown.
Does it also have an app and other things that they... Yeah, you can access the app 24/7, you can go online 24/7. I don't want to penalize the people.
It's going to cost you more in the long run, billing-wise, sending out a third card or whatever.
Most people don't even set the second.
Does Humanity House have, somebody wants to be a spokesperson, give a last 30-second spill here? Otherwise, we'll move on and make a decision. Okay, all right. I want to be fair, everybody's had a chance to speak.
Thank you guys for coming in.
You know, from a consensus, it's kind of hard to read here. It looks like we can go different ways, you can flat-out deny Humanity House's request, or if the council desires to take no action tonight, and somebody wants to review something further, you have an idea that you want to float later, we can always ask to revisit it.
My preference is not make any change to our policy, leave it the way it is.
Okay, was that a statement or a motion?
Is that a statement or a motion, Carl? That's from the mayor.
That's a, that's a motion, to leave our policy, utility billing policies, the same as they presently are.
Okay, we had a motion, does anyone wish to make a second to Carl's motion? We have a motion and a second, we'll vote by show of hands, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Four. So that's five, again, opposed? Two, five-two. Make no changes. We thank you for your time. I know it's not your desired outcome.
Mayor, do you want to let Carl do his time before you go into executive session?
That'll be fine.
Hey Carl, do you have anything for comments under council reports?
None.
Okay.
Okay, we're going into executive session, thanks for joining by phone, Carl.
You're welcome.
All right.
Bye Carl.
Moving on, executive session, can we get a motion for performance evaluation?
Mayor, I move the city council recess into executive session for 15 minutes pursuant to personal matters of non-elected personnel. KSA 75-4319B1, the purpose of executive session is to discuss an individual employee's employment, and shall include the mayor and council and Carla. The regular meeting shall reconvene in the city council chamber at 7:32 PM. Have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
All right, we're back in session following executive session, and we are now ready for council and administrative reports. We will, where did I start last time? I think I'm ready for over here.
The only thing I will say is, is that I appreciate everybody coming down and expressing an interest. Humanity House does a lot for the community, as well as the Ministerial Alliance. There are a lot of organizations that care very deeply about this community, and I would say that that conversation should probably happen. We didn't take any action today, but I would definitely be open to a discussion. I think that if I can find the time, it would do me well to volunteer with Humanity House, so I appreciate that invitation as well. And just all the people that make this community work. I think that there's something to be said for the fact that we had what, 10 individuals show up to hear about that proposal, or to discuss that proposal. And I think that that says a lot when you're looking at things that people are very passionate about. And that's something that I appreciate. So, any other organizations, Donna is involved in almost everything, so thank you as well for everything that you do for the community. There's a lot of people doing a lot of tireless work, and there's always hands available, so if you're ever bored, get ahold of Donna, and I'm sure she can find somewhere to, somewhere to put you to work. But, thank you.
I was thinking if you had time, I'd like to...
I echo Nick's comment, sentiments regarding Humanity House, I would say don't, and with anyone who comes before who is passionate about changing our community, involved in our community, don't take a setback as a defeat. So, keep doing that. I will also say that I too love Donna Hauser, she's like the abusive mother I never had growing up.
Oh my.
I love you Donna.
and how long you've been with us. Uh, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I let go of the button now, Cory.
I started when I was 12.
One-on-one use.
Joel?
That was terrible.
Kim?
Okay. I had a call from two parents and somebody needs to look into the-
No, I, I can, I can speak to that. Uh, I, I think it could have been handled differently. Yeah. Um, we got a little different story than you did. Um, it, it was not a one-time thing. It-
No, it wasn't. He said it was, went on all season.
Yeah. Um, unruly parents and unruly coaches at, at eight, nine-year-old soccer. Um, it, it, uh, I, I think it could have been handled differently. Uh, I was made aware of everything after the fact. Um, and also it was a tournament that they, that they've never had before. Uh, so this would have been a, a first-time thing. I think it's a learning experience for all of us, including city staff. Uh, but I, we, Cory spoke to someone and I, I think we've, we've addressed it. Uh, but I, I've kind of lost my patience with, with unruly fans and coaches at, at young-
I mean, if they're marching in bad, don't let a member coach you.
Well, that, uh, that, a part of being addressed is that has been addressed. Um, this, this certain coach will not be allowed to coach anymore. Um, yeah, so we, we've addressed it. We, we dealt with it. Um, again, I'm kind of-
We dealt with the situation that we were handed. Let's put it that way.
Yeah. Uh, we, again, it, we had a discussion with, with some staff. We think, in our opinion, it, in our, being me and Cory, it probably could have been handled differently on our end. Um, but again, we found out about it after the fact.
But unfortunately, if you tell that coach, move on, we don't need you, the league's going to go on, trying to find somebody else to coach. And, you know, it's tough to get volunteers.
Yeah, and it's, it's not my first rodeo with, with unruly coaches and it, it never ends well. I, I got a feeling this isn't the last time we've heard about this. Uh, hopefully it is. Hopefully it's been dealt with. Uh, but I, I would describe it as a learning experience on everyone's account, including city staff.
My other thing is, Richard, I challenge the- of the city of Iola's EMS contract versus the county's AMR. That the citizens of Iola can see what they're getting with each entity.
I have a couple of things. I also had a citizen approach me about the soccer situation, so I'm glad to hear that it's been addressed and hopefully remedied for future. Um, and now we know that, how to handle it going forward. Um, again, I want to reiterate, uh, how much I do appreciate the city office staff and those girls in the utility office and the constant calls that they get, and many of them are very unpleasant. Um, there is no need for that, and I know that they have their support with the city clerk. But, um, as humans, we should not be dealing with that. And kindness does matter, and it's a two-way street. So with that said, thank you very much, and I do appreciate your guys' diligent work and, um, keep moving forward. And that's all I have to say. Well, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Congratulations to the three that are on our anniversary list. Chief Warner and them.
Cory?
Uh, I don't have anything. We started budget meetings today with staff and we're starting to get that through that grind. And then within, you know, what, that second or third week in May, we'll meet with you guys and kind of give you the overview and hopefully push through that, that budget process.
Oh, one thing. We are in mowing season now, and I've counted four people that have put their grass clippings on the streets. Uh, and that is a major pet peeve of mine because, uh, those clippings are not supposed to be there. It is against code and we will enforce it. Uh, the, those clippings get, get into the storm drains and they clog them up. It, some people may think it's not a big deal, but it, it is a big deal. There's a reason cities have, have that kind of ordinance. Uh, so for anyone writing this down-
He's typing.
Yeah, a, a reminder that, uh, grass, that, that it is against city ordinance to have your grass clippings on the sidewalk and the street. I've seen it on both. Uh, and that is something that, that we will enforce. It, you can learn from it once and then you can easily swipe them up. Uh, but I noticed it driving around town on Saturday that a lot of people were just pushing everything out in the street.
It's a safety issue as well.
Yeah, it's a very big note.
As a motorcycle rider, it is a safety issue.
Yeah, and that's all I have, ma'am. Good reminder. Roxanne, anything?
Just, I have a great staff.
You do.
You do.
And, uh, I want to recognize they're a great staff too. And on that note, I, I got two of my utility bills. Can I give it to you tonight? And, nah, they're in the truck. I won't make you do that.
But I could use a nice bowl of chili.
My only complaint is raise your window up a little bit. Trucks are higher nowadays. My arms just aren't long enough.
I want everybody else.
You don't have to do that. Um, I too had that same soccer complaint, probably same one or different source and multiple people, so-
Yeah.
Good thing it got addressed. Um, I was hoping we could take a look at that dang grate at Highway 54, that one section on the south is, it's getting pretty sharp on the tires. Pretty good lip there. If we can do something temporarily-
It's on the list.
Pull that grate back up.
I think we're going to have to put another plate farther to the south.
Yeah, I think so.
Jason and I visited about it.
Something on that. Um, the other thing I'd like to suggest is, uh, if we could get a, a recurring page to our agenda, uh, when somebody brings something up, it doesn't necessarily have to be old business, pending business, unfinished business. It doesn't have to be something we have to address at every meeting, but the gentleman that brought up the cat issue, I think that's something that needs to come back to us. So if we could have unfinished business, stray cats, if we could have, uh, the flag committee on there, just flag committee, Highway 54. It's just a tickler to remind us that we've asked for something because many times something may be asked for and the public hears it, and you might send a memo out that night to us or the next day, the public doesn't hear it. So if, if we could just kind of get it ongoing so things don't get dropped, um, such as a Highway 54 plate, if it's on there, if we see it for two, three meetings, we can bring it up again. And, and, um, it's, it's just some way to denote that we've brought up stuff and make sure everything gets addressed.
And then if there is something that's completed, like a statement of resolution on it?
So-
It's all adjourned. That number taken except.
Is that a motion?
I second.
Do we have a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
You can't.
Oppose. Thanks, ladies, for hanging out and staying during the duration of it all.